Okay, it's just coming live now.
Ready?
Ready.
Well, good afternoon and welcome to the Leeds Health and Wellbeing Board. So my name is councillor Rebecca Chalwood and I'm the Chair of the Health and Wellbeing Board for the city. The Health and Wellbeing Board is the forum, public forum and meeting where the NHS and the voluntary sector and the council and all of the different parts of the city come together to talk about how we can create a healthier city with greater wellbeing for all of our citizens. So I'm a councillor and we have a number of councillors on the board alongside chairs of the CCG and we have chief executives and representatives from all of the important aspects of that big sector that we have in Leeds. So if you're watching this on YouTube, please do make use of the chat and let us know what you're thinking or if you have any questions. And as the meeting goes on, we will try our best to raise your points if we can. Please, can I remind members of the board to turn the microphones to mute when they're not speaking, to use the chat to indicate they would like to speak as we move through the agenda, I can keep an eye on that. So I'm going to ask members of the board to introduce themselves in turn and I'll go through my screen that I can see in front of me. So Harriet.
Hello, hello everybody, Harriet Spake, Government's Officer.
And Tim Riley.
Hi, Tim Riley, Chief Executive Lead, CCG.
Anthony Cook.
Yeah, thanks Chair, yeah, Tony Cook, Chief Officer, Health Partnerships.
I've got John Beale, who's Dr John Beale.
Good afternoon, John Beale, Chair of Health Watch Leeds.
Thank you. And Hannah, Health Watch Leeds.
Hi, my name's Hannah Davies and I'm Chief Executive, Health Watch Leeds.
Thank you. Anthony Keighley.
Hello, yes, I'm Anthony Keighley, I'm from NHS England and NHS Improvement, I'm the locality director for West Yorkshire and Harrogate.
Thank you. Paul Bollum.
Paul Bollum, hi, Head of Leeds Plan.
Thank you. Alistair Walling, who's a doctor as well.
Hi, I'm Alistair Walling, GP and the Chief Clinical Information Officer for the City of Leeds.
Thank you. And I've got Julie Longworth.
Good afternoon, everybody, I'm Julie Longworth, I'm Deputy Director for Children and Families and I'm here representing South Rique, Director of Children and Families today.
Thank you. Cath Roff.
Good afternoon, Cath Roff, Director of Adults and Health for the City Council.
Thank you. Jim Bowick.
Jim Bowick, Chief Executive Lead, GP Confederation.
And Norma Harrington, councillor.
Hi, Norma Harrington, Wetherby Ward.
Thank you. Alison Low.
Hello, I'm Alison Low and I'm here representing the third sector.
Thank you. Sarah Monroe, who's also a doctor.
Hello, I'm Sarah Monroe, I'm the Chief Executive, Leading Our Partnership, NHS Trust.
And I think another doctor, Jason Brock.
Hi, good afternoon, everyone, I'm Jason Brock, I'm a GP and I'm the clinical chair of NHS Leeds CCG.
Trying to use everyone's titles, forgive me if I get them wrong. Councillor Fiona Venna.
Hi, everyone, I'm Councillor Fiona Venna, I'm the Cabinet Member for Children and Families at the council.
Thank you. And then Julian Hartley.
Hi there, Julian Hartley, Chief Executive, Leeds Teaching Hospitals.
Thank you. And Samuel Flint, I believe you're helping with IT today. Yep, perhaps he won't introduce himself, that's fine. I've got Rob McHugh.
Hi, Rob McHugh, Senior Support Officer for councillor Chalwood.
Thank you. And Sarah Bronston.
Hello, Sarah Bronston from the Leeds Academic Health Partnership.
Natasha, welcome Natasha, Natasha Lambert, would you like to just introduce yourself?
I'm Natasha from Health Watch slash Youth Watch.
Lovely to have you here today, thank you so much for coming and helping us with this session. And I've got councillor Alice Smart.
Hi there, Alice Smart, councillor for Armley.
Thank you. And I've got Pip Gough.
Hi, sorry, slow to unmute, really good to see you all, I'm here, yeah, supporting the work of the Communities of Interest work, I work for Form Central, hi.
Thank you. Victoria Eaton.
Good afternoon, Victoria Eaton, Director of Public Health at Leeds City Council.
Thank you. Councillor Stuart Galton.
Thanks Chair, Stuart Galton, I am the leader of the Liberal Democrat Group on the council and a member of the exec board.
Thank you. Lucy Jackson.
Hi, Lucy Jackson, Consulting Public Health, Chief Officer in Adults and Health at the council.
Okay, thank you. So on the next line I have Wood PH, I'm not sure if that is a person. Ah, there he is, doctor, another doctor, here we go. I think you're on mute. But we can come back to you. Dr Phil Wood. We'll come back to you if we can, if you can figure that out, I'll come to, I'll go to Gaynor and then come back, Gaynor, Gaynor Connor.
Hi, good afternoon, everybody, Gaynor Connor, Director of Transformation for Leeds GP Confederation and here for the item on the Covid vaccination programme along with Sam and Phil.
Thank you, Gaynor. And I think we've just seen Sam Prince as well. Joined. Samuel on mute as well. I might have to come back to Sam as well, Phil, do we have you?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Great, thank you, I'm Phil Wood, I'm Chief Medical Officer for Leeds Teaching Hospitals, thanks.
Wonderful, lovely to see you. And got Arfan Hussain.
Arfan Hussain, Health Partnerships.
Alison L, which I'm assuming is Alison Low, we've already spoken to Alison. There's two, two screens for Alison, is that right Alison? Yeah, yeah. And Shaq.
Hello, my name is Shaq and I'm the interim Head of Communications and Engagement at NHS Leeds CCG.
Okay, great, thank you. Sam, do we have you? Can't hear Sam at the moment. So maybe we'll sort out your sound and then when you come to do your, present your item, you can introduce yourself, but lovely to see you here today as well from Community Healthcare Trust. So thank you for introducing yourselves, that's really good for the public to understand who is here. So on behalf of the board, oh, I can hear somebody now. Sam, is that you?
I hope so, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Sam Prince, I'm Director of Operations at Leeds Community Healthcare and I'm also the Senior Responsible Officer for Leeds Covid Vaccination Programme.
Excellent, lovely, thank you, I think we got through everyone. Anyone who didn't say who they are, they can let me know, I think I saw, I got through everybody, yeah. If you can go on mute again, that would be great, just because I get a bit of feedback on that. Lovely, thank you very much. So on behalf of the board, we would all like to thank everyone in Leeds for all of the work we're collectively doing and have done already in 2020 to come together to respond to the Covid-19 crisis. It has been almost a year of something none of us have seen in our lifetimes and we've all pulled together really, really well and whether that's people homeschooling and I'm homeschooling as well, so I've got children type, probably kind of invaded at any point and many of us will be in that situation or if we're working on the frontline or if we're caring for someone or if we're managing a service, I just want to, we all want to say thank you for everything you're doing and to pull together at this really difficult time for Leeds. It's really highlighted as well how health and care are intrinsically linked and hugely influenced by the inequalities present in society, particularly for people in our communities and workforce that have been most impacted by the virus. This understanding has been at the heart of the work of the Leeds Health and Wellbeing Board and we want to create conditions to work together as team leads to really tackle this and help to work towards, you know, reducing those inequalities going forward so that people can have health and wealth in the future and it doesn't mean people are left behind because of the pandemic and the virus. So while we continue to feel the impact, there is a light at the end of the tunnel with our vaccination rollout, which we are focusing on in this meeting today. This is a major logistical exercise and it's been an incredible example of the strength of our partnerships here in Leeds and I'd like to pay tribute to every member of the Health and Wellbeing Board and all of your staff and partners for doing such a great job pulling together. It's important that we focus on it today so that it's live while people are really starting to feel the effects of the vaccination programme, many people are starting to get invited or have had their vaccinations here in Leeds and it's really great to see so many people taking up the vaccination. So I want to thank in advance the speakers who've come today to talk about what's happening. We're going to hear where we are with the vaccination programme, what people have been saying about it with feedback and want to know about more about it and the approach we're taking in Leeds to tackle health inequalities around the vaccination programme because we know some people will find it harder to access or get the vaccination than others. So we're going to go through the formal bits now, Harriet, if you could just take us through items two to six, please.
Yes, of course, thank you Chair. So under agenda item number two, there are no appeals against refusal of inspection of documents today. Under agenda item number three, there's no exempt information to be considered today. Under agenda item number four, there are no late items or supplementary information. Under agenda item number five, can I ask members to declare any discloseable community interests, please? I'll take silence as non. Okay, thank you. And apologies Chair, we've received apologies from Paul Money and Superintendent Jackie Marsh and also from South Rique with Julie Longworth here today as substitute, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so item seven is questions and public deputations. We have a, an open forum section, beginning of every Health and Wellbeing Board. At the moment, we've had no questions received from the public and but other questions might be raised during the meeting about the Covid vaccination programme. And if you're watching this live on YouTube, do make use of the chat and let us know what you're thinking or if you have any questions and we'll do our best as the meeting goes on to try to feed those points through. Okay, so an item eight, minutes of the meeting on the 30th of September 2020. Can we note the minutes as an accurate record of the meeting, if anybody has any comments on the minutes or matters arising? Or anything we'd like to alter or comment on, could you say it in the chat, please? I'm not seeing anything, so I'm going to take that as an accurate record. Lovely, right, well, in that case, we're going to move on to the part of the meeting where we're going to hear more about what's happening currently with our vaccination programme. This is going to be led by Sam Prince, Phil Wood and Gaynor Connor. And I believe we have about 20 minutes of presentation and then we have about 20, 25 minutes of discussion and questions following that. So Sam is from the Leeds Community Healthcare Trust who is leading the Leeds Covid Vaccination Programme. Phil Wood from the Health and Wellbeing Hospitals is leading the vaccine programme for West Yorkshire and Harrogate Health and Care Partnership and Gaynor Connor from the Leeds GP for Confederation who's been working closely with our GP practices to be ready for the rollout. So on behalf of the board, thank you for all the work you have done as part of Team Leeds to drive this work forward. I know we're very ambitious in Leeds and ready to go, subject to supply of the vaccine, so I'm going to hand over to Sam and you can take it from there, thank you.
Thank you very much. And I think Phil wants to say a few introductory words and then he'll pass over to me.
Thanks Sam, so thank you councillor Chalwood and thank you to members of the board for giving us the chance to do this. I just want to say a very brief introduction before handing over to Sam, who's very much been leading on this for Leeds. Just to put into context that in late November we were asked to mobilise a West Yorkshire place level vaccination programme, which was initially run through a lead provider arrangement and Leeds Teaching Hospitals was asked to fulfil that function initially. I think that was based on the uncertainty around the vaccine initially and wanting to know that these would be safe to deliver initially in a hospital setting. We very quickly took advantage of the very strong place-based arrangements across West Yorkshire ICS and so each of our places, obviously including Leeds, has a senior responsible officer and the programme approach has been very much to allow those teams across West Yorkshire in each place to focus their own efforts to deliver the vaccination programme to the best benefit of their own communities. We've, we've met as a group of SROs a couple of times each week to share learning and to drive the programme forward. And I have to say, it's been a really collective effort, both in Leeds, as you'll hear from Sam and Gaynor, but also across West Yorkshire. I should mention just for information that Harrogate is not part of our West Yorkshire programme because they are within the other ICS for their vaccination programme, which has left us five places. We focused very much on doing our best, as you're here, to offer the vaccine out as quickly and as safely as possible to all those people who are of the highest priority in need of the vaccine and to emphasise that those are, as Sam will talk about, those for whom catching Covid is itself the most dangerous and risky problem. So the vaccine target populations, as you'll hear, has very much been around trying to help those in greatest need of protection from what can be a devastating and of course fatal disease. So with that, I think I'll hand over to Sam, thank you.
Thank you. So I think we've got the slide deck that's going to be, so thank you. Do you want to just move on to the next slide, please? Okay, so I'm conscious that people have had a very, very difficult year and I think that when we all heard about the approval of the vaccines and late last year, it did give us great hope. And I just picked out a quote here from someone saying, you know, we must encourage everyone, if they possibly can, to come forward for the vaccination when it is their turn. Have the next slide, please. So I want to start by saying a huge thank you to Team Leeds. I feel absolutely privileged and delighted to be leading this programme and that's simply because all the partners around me have all wanted to do their bit, play their part and we have seen some outstanding people step forward to help with it and that's across the whole system. So I'm talking about the NHS Trusts and Primary Care, from Leeds City Council and from, from those departments that I don't always come into contact with. So I'm very familiar with working with my colleagues in Adults and Health and in Children's Services but every department has come forward and to play their part. Also had enormous support from the third sector and, and other, other contractors that again, that I've not had much contact with. So our optometrists, dentists, et cetera, everyone has come forward to say, can we help and can we make a difference? So I'm going to start by saying thank you, Team Leeds. I think that we are all exceptionally lucky to live in Leeds and have this kind of partnership because believe me, when I talk to colleagues across West Yorkshire, across the further footprint, it isn't always like this. So I think we're very lucky to live and work here. Okay, so next slide celebrates Leeds making history. So on the 8th of December, we were one of sorry, did you lose me then? I lost you for a moment, sorry. On the 8th of December, we were one of 50 hospital hubs that opened and we were right at the beginning of the queue, so I was delighted to be part of that. And we opened our first hub in the Thackeray Medical Museum. And again, I really liked the connection with making history and with the, with the medical museum and we continue to make history in Leeds. And then further on into December, another landmark event, we saw three primary care networks start offering vaccinations as well. So again, right at the front of the queue when it came to making sure that we could vaccinate our population. We've just gone to the next one, I, I thought it would be fun just to give you a sense of what it's like. And here are a few of our vaccinators and the first people to be vaccinated. And I remember the first day at the Thackeray and how delighted and people were coming in and saying, I'm so pleased that I was there. And it's a really nice working environment because the people working there think they're making a difference and know they're making a difference. And it's a very pleasant working environment and we're trying to make it as good a patient experience as it possibly can be. So can we move on again, please? So how did we do this? So when, when I first put my hand up for this task, I, I thought it would be challenging and it certainly has been and it's been very frustrating at times, but it's been exceptionally rewarding. So we set up a programme board and brought partners in. And I've tried to run that programme board, not as a hierarchical arrangement, but everybody coming and giving their best, doing their part. And I think that's really working well, we've had cooperation from all the different teams and, and you know, some of the teams that we don't always pay tribute to at these things, including workforce and the business intelligence teams, communication, everybody has played a part here. And the work obviously needed to be compartmentalised in, in some way. And so we've set up a number of work streams, which you'll hear about. And again, people have gone off and done their, their bit to bring it all together. Also worked with Health Watch Leeds and to conduct regular public surveys and you'll hear a little bit more about that in the afternoon. And so next slide, please. So where are we today? So I've talked about the hospital hub that was set up at St James's. We now have a hospital hub also at the Mount and that's part of the OIPFT estate and they went live on the 11th of January and that's going well. Eighteen of our primary care networks are live and they have been vaccinating patients and we now have two pharmacy sites as well, so that's new for this week and I expect there will be some expansion of community sites as well. And we have a community vaccination centre that will be at Elland Road. So today, Elland Road opened as an extension of the hospital hub and for the next couple of weeks, staff from both health and social care, in the very broadest sense, will be invited for their vaccination at that site. We think to be confirmed on the 8th of February, that will change to become a community vaccination centre. So that will be a site that patients, the public can access as well. And then we're looking at how we have other teams that either pop up in locations so that we can meet the needs of a particular population or moves from place to place. And I'm just calling that the roving team at the moment, we may call that something else in due course. And we'll talk about that as part of the health inequalities work later on in the afternoon. So this morning, as I say, we opened at Elland Road and my next slide is, is difficult to work out, but it's really important that you see it. So there are actually five photographs of Elland Road. And it's at the Centenary Pavilion, which is the building opposite the main stadium. And we have 10 pods there, so 20 vaccinating stations. And today we've opened, we hope to vaccinate around six and a half thousand people this week, moving up to 14,000 next week and then into the mid to late twenties weeks three. And it's a really professional setup, it looks absolutely fantastic and credit to particularly the Leeds Teaching Hospitals Estates Team and Leeds City Council Estates Team who helped us with that, fantastic. So I think we're now going to see a short film about the journey that you might expect at the vaccination hub.
Vaccination Hub Journey from Entry to Exit. When invited for your Covid-19 vaccination slot, this is what you can expect. Please arrive at your designated time only, on your own and with a form of identification. You will be given a face mask to wear if you do not already have one and you will see everyone around the centre will be wearing one with additional PPE. As you enter the centre, you will be asked by your name and details and also whether you are fit and well. You will be checked off a register of patients booked in for that day. The consultation space is an opportunity for you to read through the relevant vaccination information and complete a health questionnaire. You will be told which vaccination you are due to receive and given time with a doctor or consultant to go through any queries or concerns. This should only take a few minutes before you are shown into the next available pod where a nurse will check in with you and prepare you for your injection. Once you have received your vaccination, we want to make sure you are okay before you leave the centre. You'll be shown to a supervised seating area where you will wait 15 minutes prior to being given the all-clear to go home. Should you have any adverse reactions at this time, such as drowsiness or nausea, you are in the right place to be cared for. Then all that we ask is that you share your experience and encourage others to get the vaccine too.
Sam, I think you're on mute still, for me you are.
Okay. Can you hear me? And so initially we were asked to focus on a small number of groups, that's care home staff and residents and patients aged 18 above and frontline health and social care staff. So when we opened at the Thackeray and we did invite care home staff into the Thackeray as well as and health and social care staff and a small number of over 80s. And primary care networks then picked up the, the predominant number of over 80s. And very recently, we've been able to get out to care homes to vaccinate residents there. So I'm pleased to say that we now have a plan to ensure that all our residents are vaccinated by the 24th of January. So really pleased that we can do that. And the priority groups have now been extended and when primary care networks have vaccinated the majority of their over 80s, they're able to move on to the initially the over 75s, then the over 70s and the clinically extremely vulnerable cohorts. So we expect the four cohorts detailed there to be vaccinated by the middle of February. We're hoping that certainly frontline health and social care staff will be vaccinated by the end of January. And we'll continue to listen to the advice of the JCBI and as they broaden out the groups, we will obviously vaccinate accordingly. So the next slide, please, shows the order of vaccine delivery. And I, I have had many emails, I know that my colleagues have, about can we include different groups? Unfortunately, we need to abide by the advice of the JCBI and that's as written there. And so please, if you're given a, a negative response when you want them to bring another group in, that's why you're getting that, because we're trying to keep with that. What I wanted to point out actually was that when we get down to number six, all individuals aged 16 years to 64 years with underlying health conditions, that one, that also includes unpaid carers, I don't think we have been explicit about that and as people have asked me, I wanted to point that out. Okay, so if no one please, I've talked about the workforce, we have a significant challenge here. We have around 60,000 people in Leeds who consider themselves a part of the health and social care workforce. So we're looking at how we can ensure that they're offered vaccinations in the right order. And so we started with the clinically extremely vulnerable staff and I'm pleased to say that all those staff should have been offered a vaccination, if you do know someone who fits that category, he's got in touch, but they should have been offered. They may not have taken it, but they should, they should have been offered. And then we're looking at the patient-facing, citizen-facing staff who need the vaccination, who are over 50, then those that are under 50, then we'll move on to all of the over 50s and then all the other under 50s. We will do that as quickly as we can, but we do need to make sure that those staff that are exposed to Covid positive patients on a regular basis are prioritised first. And again, I've had lots of emails about can this group be prioritised? Just please bear with us, we're trying to get through this, through everyone as quickly as we can. And essentially, we're talking about a fairly short timeframe, so please, be patient and please encourage your teams to follow this guidance. Okay, next slide. And I'm delighted with the way that our recruitment campaign has gone, we've had lots of people who've come forward to do additional shifts on top of their usual jobs, people who've come back from retirement. Lots of interest, I think everybody can see that this is the way that we get out of this situation and want to help. And so our recruitment strategy offers both paid and non-paid roles, it offers paid clinical and paid non-clinical roles. We're looking at all options and we've had such an enormous response from students, 1700, as it says there. So there's lots of people who want to be involved. I, I am very hopeful that staffing won't be the thing that stops us in Leeds, which is again, different to other areas. Shall we go on? The Talking Health and Of course, I could talk about this all afternoon and there are others in a better place to do it. and there are others in a better place to do it. And so I just wanted to make sure that everyone is aware that this is very much at the top of our agenda. That we're completely aware of how inequalities are exacerbated during a pandemic. And I've already said that we're working with Health Watch. We're also working with Leeds Academic Health Partnership. And we will do this element of the programme. Sorry, we'll do this element of the programme very much in partnership with our third sector partners. And Lucy and Sarah are going to do some more overview on that towards the end of the meeting. We want to communications. So I've listed there what what we're trying to do. Our strategic focus is to improve public and staff knowledge, perceptions and motivation to vaccine. And so we've got effective internal communications, workforce recruitment, trying to improve staff confidence and uptake. And I'm sure that my colleagues and the steering group are all having similar conversations with their teams within their organisations. We're looking at insights that are provided from Health Watch and other organisations. We've really got to manage expectations. I've already talked about the tension that's already out there about the order in which vaccines are given. And and we just need to make sure that we labour the points about the ordering. And then effective and timely stakeholder engagement. So I think, again, the success of the programme, I feel that we've tried to get out to as many places as we can to update on what we're doing. And we'll continue to offer that as people want. Next one, please. Also working with communities of interest. So we've got a social media plan specifically targeting ethnically diverse communities. And we've got a general social media plan. And we've had videos featuring health professionals, we've had a blog from local demand, and the generic newsletter article, etc. So there's lots of comments out there. And we're really trying to boost public confidence about coming forward when it's your turn. So it's last slide for me. So key messages. I know people are anxious. They want their family members to be vaccinated. And I understand that completely. Please be patient with us because the the limiting factor is the supply of vaccines. So as soon as you get a vaccine, we're vaccinating people. And and if your relative hasn't been called yet, they will be. Just be patient, wait for us to call you. And again, I just reiterate that we're hoping to vaccinate those four priority groups by the middle of February. So there's still a little bit of time yet. And please, please ask them not to contact the NHS to seek a vaccine. We will definitely contact you. And please, when we contact you, act immediately and come to the appointment. And please continue to follow all the guidance. Hand hygiene and social distancing, in particular, the most important things that you can do to control the virus and save lives. And I'll just finish with a couple of more photographs. Okay.
Thank you very much indeed. It's wonderful to see such a lot of work happening and it's really reassuring. Thank you very much for all you're doing. There is some questions that we've had. That'll be a second. And yeah, we've had, we've got a question from the Leeds Faith Forum. And we've also got a question on a video. Oh, that's on the video. But we've got two members of the board who are interested in helping us understand their experiences of either how they feel about the vaccine or having had the vaccine. We have had one question on the on the chat though, which was a factual question. Maybe we could just share that first from councillor Galton about the 15-minute wait at the end of the vaccination, is that still relevant? So if somebody could just pick that up and then we can.
Can I, Chair, can I offer the context of the question?
Yeah.
It sort of, it has a wider remit. Because there was a bit about, at the end, about managing expectations. And one of the things that local councillors are doing to try and help the process of the vaccination is to help health professionals to concentrate on the actual vaccination and enable volunteers to cover a lot of the, well, not handholding, obviously, because that's not socially distanced, but you know, in terms of the patient management pre and post jab. And one of the key issues is the 15-minute wait. Because originally, when we're doing expectations for volunteers, we'd say to them, well, the reason why you're needed is we need to observe people 15 minutes post-jab to make sure there's no adverse reactions. And then later on, we're told, oh, with the new vaccine, we don't need that. And now this presentation tells us, well, actually, you still do need 15 minutes before you can get into a car. So understanding the context of all these stipulations is really key. If, I appreciate you're going out and recruiting volunteers to do the actual vaccinations, but for the others that are arranging volunteering to wrap around those services and add value to them, that kind of messaging is really helpful. And of course, when things happen on social media, when people get cross-referencing, it's quite good to be a good point of reference to to correct in those in those circumstances. So all I would say is, if you are doing that, can you clarify the language? And when you're talking, for instance, in terms of prioritisation, patient-facing people, and then there's calls for other people in other emergency services to be included. At one point, you changed it from patient-facing to, I think, public-facing? And I'm not sure therefore if there is some movement in that enveloping. Anyway, I'll leave it at that. Thank you, Chair.
Thanks. Sam, do you want to pick that up?
Okay, well, no, at the moment, there's still a 15-minute wait after the Pfizer vaccine, but not after the AstraZeneca vaccine. But we do advise people not to drive for 15 minutes. And so we will need to think about that in terms of messaging. It's a good point to make sure that people who are supporting people to get there know exactly what's what's to be expected. And in terms of the patient-facing, citizen-facing, I think that was just different language that I was using. It's anyone who could be working closely with someone who could be exposed to COVID. However, we will look at areas where we will first instance. So for example, people who are working in A and E and so on will be prioritised as as key workers to be vaccinated first.
Okay, I think we might come back to this as well. Because there's quite a lot of interest about teachers and other and other people who who would like to be vaccinated. I appreciate your working with a very prescribed list that's given down to us rather than something we can shape as locally as we might like to. And so I have got three other questions, people who would like to ask questions. Could I, just before we do that, ask Thea and Alison to share their experiences? Because they are prepared to speak on that. So can I bring Thea in first, please? If she's ready.
Sure. This was something, hello, everybody. This was a conversation that happened actually at an executive group where we were discussing the difference between being vaccine hesitant and and how that feels and being actively against all vaccination, which is a different group. And we feel as a city, it's important to understand that being vaccine hesitant can be somewhere that a whole range of people can be. And I described how I've been vaccine hesitant because I have a history of anaphylaxis. And having had that and been hospitalized, that's caused me anxiety when I was aware of the Pfizer vaccine. So as a leader in Leeds, it feels important to be clear that anybody can be vaccine hesitant. The important thing is to seek out the right conversation and to have the right, in my case, very reassuring conversations. Now, I'm very lucky, I can seek out the right conversation because I have access to, immediately have access to brilliant doctors and brilliant nurses and brilliant leaders in this field. But any, or indeed the director of public health, I could ask directly myself and Sam Prince and all of these people who I can ask. But the point of my colleagues asking me to talk is to really to make it clear as a city that we understand vaccine hesitancy. We wouldn't put people, we want to encourage people to speak up. We want to encourage people to be open about their own hesitancy and to seek answers. I appreciate they won't be as privileged as me in being able to seek those answers as quickly and easily as I can and to get the reassurance that I've got. I haven't had the vaccine. I'm not first in line. I'm not, I'm not working directly with patients. But when my time comes now, I will have the vaccine and will feel confident about it. So it was really to put that forward, councillor, is what I think is important for our approach in Leeds, to not vilify those who may be vaccine hesitant, but to encourage them to have a conversation.
Thank you, Thea. I think that really speaks to a huge number of people, not just for anaphylaxis reasons, but who might be hesitant for all sorts of reasons. Maybe they heard a rumour or there was some misinformation online, which we have all seen sadly about about it. And and that that shouldn't be judged as being anti-vax or somehow negative. And that maybe we could work with people to encourage them by showing them that if you, a family member or somebody they know has had the vaccine and they're okay, maybe they'll be okay as well, and just leading people gently. And like you say, having the right conversations, that's really helpful. Thank you very much. And okay, could I now ask Alison to share your experience, if you're willing to, Alison?
Yeah, absolutely. So just as context, I should point out that both Val and Forum Central have been working with people in the system to make sure that third sector partners were included in the vaccination rule-out, for which I thank you. And as a result of that, organisations like Touchstone have received links to access vaccines that have been given to health and social care staff. And it was quite clearly stipulated which staff could get those vaccines. And when it got to the over 70s and extremely clinically vulnerable, I sagged and danced, not because I'm 70, but because I am extremely clinically vulnerable and I've been living in this room for 10 months. So I was able on Monday to get my vaccine, which was brilliant via LTHT. So I went to the Accra Medical Centre. I should just say that, first of all, the system for booking on was quite straightforward, unless you're following vaccination, three months hence was already booked up. Then you had to use your noggin, which I didn't for two days, and realise that if you change the date of your first vaccination, you automatically change the date of your second vaccination and then you can get in. I was upset for two days because I didn't realise I could do that, but then I did work it out. I am 56, so these things are testing. And I turned up on Monday, Accra Medical Centre, and it was a very smooth process. Lots of helpful staff. I got the jab, I waited 15 minutes and off I went. The thing that I'd like to feedback, I've got lots to say about health inequalities, which I won't say here because I think Lucy Jackson is going to talk about that later and I shall piggyback onto that conversation. In terms of my experience, it was great for me because I'm active, I'm able, I can walk, all the rest of it. But if somebody had a disability and was not able to use the stairs, there were two flights of stairs to get up to the room. If I needed a carer, so one of my staff who is visually impaired nearly didn't book on because she thought she couldn't take her husband with her to to support through that process. And I commended that she could, but there's no information about access needs. So she wasn't aware of that. Nobody looked like me in that in that building. So I didn't know if there was any local speech, mental languages. And if I was hesitant about accessing that vaccine, the fact that nobody there looked like me, they could have been in the pods, they might have been there, but I couldn't see them, might have been a further reason for people to turn around. And also, it was great that there were GPs, doctors there, ready to answer my questions. And I did have a doctor come to speak to me. I think it was a bit of a waste of resources. And I wonder how we might choose to use volunteers going forward. I was heartened to hear Sam's comments about volunteers. But I think then the issue of visible communities could then be addressed through the use of volunteers. And I know that Volentraction Leeds has got a big list of volunteers and there are other volunteers operating across the third sector who would be really happy to help, as well as the students that have already been mentioned. So a really good, positive experience because I have got the ability to do things for myself. I think it was easier if I had a disability or other impairment or impediment. It might have been a bit trickier. And I hope that that's all taken into account at Elland Road, and I'm sure it is.
Well, thank you, Alison, again, for your sharing your experiences. It's just really useful for all of us, I think, to have a first-hand account of how it is, how it feels. And that's just.
I feel perfectly well. No ill effects. Sorry, I'm for one day and now I'm perfect.
Wonderful. That's really, really good to hear. And I think the thing that struck me when you were speaking there is about transport, actually, about as well, how to, when it's, when Elland Road is being used potentially as a community facility, which I know isn't just yet, but when it is, how do we get people, you know, getting people there and back and out? And, you know, throughput is going to be one of those really important factors to consider, as well as steps and access and languages. Just before we go back to Sam, can I bring in councillor Harrington with your question, please?
Thank you, Chair. And there's two very small questions. The one, Sam, you mentioned about recruitment of people who want to help with the vaccination programme. One of our LCP members said that it was kind of problematic because in order to get DBS checks done, they'd been sending off paperwork and they were being told it was going to take six to eight weeks for those DBS checks to come back. Has there been any improvement in that in the last couple of weeks? And is it something that we're able to speed up in any way? You know, if the government can help us with that. And then the other question is, people now are starting, I've had several emails this morning. People now are starting to get letters, because they're 70-plus, asking them to go to their, to book an appointment for their vaccination. But one gentleman said that the nearest vaccination centre, when he went online to do it, was either Morley or Wakefield. The furthest was Liverpool or Halifax, with Blackburn and Manchester in between. And the alternative, he was told, was to wait for his GP to call him forward to do it. But where he lives, there is a vaccination hub two streets away, which is actually vaccinating people at the moment. And it's just a question about how is the the letter sending project working with the GPs actually calling people? Because I know in Wetherby Ward, we have a confederation where the five practices are actually doing that themselves. But even people in Wetherby are now starting to get these letters, so it's a little bit confusing. Thank you.
Okay, perhaps before we just go to answer that question, could I also bring in Dr Beale? Is that on a totally different subject, Dr Beale?
Well, it is a follow-up to what Sam has been talking about.
Okay.
First of all, I mean, thank you very much, Sam, for explaining the system. I just want to ask a question about a particular subgroup of one of those priority groups. And that is people who are very difficult to contact, that is, people of no fixed abode, people who are homeless, people who are surfers or so on. How are you getting to them to make sure that if they do fit one of the priority groups, that they are able to get their vaccination? And if I can just give a quick follow-up to what Thea was talking about, I was at a local care partnership meeting yesterday and it was said that for people who are hesitant and are approached, a code is put on their record saying that they have declined it. Can there be some reassurance for people that should they change their mind? Should they actually learn that the rumours they've heard in the past are not correct? That it's a safe and a very worthwhile thing to do, that they can come back and still get their vaccine?
Okay, both excellent questions and contributions. So, Sam, would you like to start with some of those answers? We also have a video question I'd like to bring in. And then I might bring in Dr Walling as well. I don't know whether, Alison, you also want to pick up some of the GP points that were raised then? Yeah, so how about you start and then we can.
Okay, so in terms of recruitment, I hadn't actually heard about the delay in the DBS checks. But I will, I'll speak to my colleague about that. I wonder if that is because people have gone through a national route rather than a local route and we'll try and get some information out so that people can be recruited locally? Because we can often do, we've got more control over it locally. In terms of the letter that has gone out, the letters have been issued because some of the community vaccination sites have gone live. And the letters, the letters give the link to either the community vaccination centres or the community pharmacies. If we want to stay with a general practice, we'd encourage them to wait till their GP gets in touch with them, because they will. And it actually does say that in the letter, that if they wish to wait for their GP, they can do. So the gentleman that councillor Harrington talked about, if he wants to wait, and he will be called by his PCN hub very soon. And in terms of the people who are no fixed abode, they're included in our Health Inequalities Action Plan. And I'll just give Lucy a heads up to talk about that later on. And I'll just give Lucy a heads up to talk about that later on. And then the code declined. I'll bring Gaynor in, but I think that will be so that we know that people have declined at this time, so that we can keep a good idea of the numbers. But people can change their mind at any time. That's not a problem. Gaynor, do you want to add to that?
Yeah, thanks, Sam. Yeah, that's correct because I think what we, we had some examples of where people were being called multiple times and that was causing people distress and they were feeling like they were being pressured to make a decision sooner than they were able. So I think some PCNs have taken the decision, like I said, to put a temporary code on to the record in order to identify that there's already been a conversation with that person. So that if they're approached again, the conversation can be couched in those terms and the person isn't receiving repeated invitations and then feeling pressured. But absolutely, that's not for the purpose of excluding anybody to receive a vaccine going forward.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, those answers. Dr Walling, do you want to bring in your experience you wanted to raise about how it's been going in your area?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I just thought it'd be useful for people to understand kind of what's been going on. So I'm in the Cross Gates PCN Primary Care Network, which was actually in wave two. So we got on the, about the third day of primary care deliveries. I think it's really, it's important for people to understand how it's working. It is slightly different to the other areas in that they will be called by a general practice, but we are working religiously to those lists and to the criteria. And there's a few points I'm going to kind of make just so that everybody is reiterating the same thing. We are adhering absolutely to the priority criteria and it is really important that we send those messages that that's a fair way to do it and we are trying not wherever to bend those rules, working within them. We are getting quite a lot of people in primary care ringing up, asking us, making arguments as to why they should be in a particular group. And I would encourage people to, that while we understand there's a lot of eagerness to get this as soon as possible, if people could kind of hold the line on that, that would be very helpful because it is taking up a lot of our resources. But to put it in context, we are delivering, along with most PCNs, within three days of getting vaccine deliveries, we've usually finished completely. We, I've been in, I've done about 200 or 300 vaccines myself and my colleagues have done similar numbers in these clinics, running throughout days, often in overtime. And the atmosphere is brilliant. People love feeling that they are making a real difference. The 80-year-olds who are coming in, come hell or high water. We did a clinic over the snow weekend recently and had to change how we were doing it because we didn't want any queuing outside and we were getting people in safely. But they are coming in with a big grin on their face and they are leaving with a big grin on their face. And we will tolerate, we will support with the wait, but actually, yeah, the Oxford vaccine is a real help from that point of view. The volunteering in primary care is fantastic. We've had a lot of people, both from patient groups and others, but actually a lot of staff from the health and care system who perhaps don't work direct patient-facing have offered their time. We have lists and it's brilliant to see and really, really appreciated. I've had my vaccines as patient-facing and it's straightforward. It's just like any other vaccine. And we are seeing people get a temperature, particularly if you get your second one, which will come later on in the time. So it's just worth warning people about things like that, actually, especially in the heat of COVID. A temperature alone post-vaccine does not require a COVID test and does not require isolation in the first 48 hours and it can get quite high. So we've had a few people with things such as that. But what's happening now is we're getting deliveries with reasonable notification on a weekly basis. But because of the nature of these vials and people will need to be there to be called at short notice. There's 10 doses in an AstraZeneca vial, later on it'll be eight, but you can usually get 11 and very occasionally 12 out of them. And from the Pfizer, you can get six rather than just the five. What that means is we can't guarantee it and we don't want to cancel people. We're having lists to come in at short notice at the end of the day. So it's just, again, really useful for people to know that they may get short notice and that things may vary. But yeah, on the whole, we are working through them as fast as we possibly can. It is frustrating for people that they don't know when that's going to be and it's usually within a couple of days. But we will call people and yeah, the care homes are really interesting. They, we've done those and successfully completed those in our area and I know across Leeds that's happening. But we've had quite a bit of hesitancy from some of the staff in those places. So the messages that we can give to kind of get that uptake, because it's vital, is really important. So, yeah.
Yeah, thank you. I saw that you, well, your PCN, the Cross Gates PCN on Twitter, had said that they had vaccinated all care home residents and staff, I think, and I think that's wonderful to see. And I think we were up to sort of about 10% of the eligible population of the city has been vaccinated so far. I think that's about right to say, isn't it? But which is a great achievement and we all want to see teachers be vaccinated or offered vaccinations and also people who are home cared for. So I have an 94-year-old grandma and she's probably, she hasn't had her vaccination, it's not in Leeds, but I imagine that's because the difficulties when going out to people. And it's the supply of the AstraZeneca vaccine, I would have thought, that will allow that to happen. I'm just seeing nods. I'm assuming that's correct. Okay.
Yeah, absolutely. And that's coming through now. That's the vaccine that's being delivered widely. So home visits are starting kind of around.
And that's a resource intensive, you could do fewer, that'll take longer. Yeah, yeah. And right, so just with the context of time, we've got the question on the video from Simon from the Leeds Faith Forum. So if we can have that now, that'd be great.
I'm Simon Phillips from Leeds Faith's Forum and I represent the faith sector on the Communities of Interest Network. My question relates to vaccination centres. We've seen that some leisure centres and some other community venues have been allocated to be vaccination centres. I just wondered if there's any plans to approach places of worship or other faith buildings to be used as vaccination centres? And what those faith buildings would need to do in order to be eligible, if that's the right word, to be vaccination centres? Thanks a lot.
Well, thank you for that question. That is an excellent question. We, I think we all saw on the news the cathedral being used for vaccinations with the organ playing in the background, which I thought was lovely. So, Sam, would you like to answer that question?
Okay, so for now, the centres that we will have at Ellen Road, the hospital hubs, the PCNs, and will be, and community pharmacies will essentially be the main vaccination centres. However, we're looking at communities where uptake isn't as good and what we can do to support those communities to access the service. And so we're looking at the possibility of having pop-up clinics in different places. So I can't say yes to that question completely, but it's something that we will consider as part of the, how do we make sure that we get to all areas of the population?
Okay, thank you for that. If we could keep that under review. You know, churches and mosques and temples, usually very big spaces with good ventilation, certainly in older buildings, naturally with good ventilation. Anthony Keely, would you like to just say that comment?
Yes, thanks, Chair. I was just, sorry, just sharing on the chat for the meeting that I heard from colleagues running the national programme in a meeting today that for the first time, a Sikh temple has opened as a vaccine centre this week and similarly a mosque. So that they're certainly excellent locations for this purpose and very welcome to be part of the programme.
Okay, thank you. Really, really important to include that consideration. So thank you very much for that. So I'm going to move us on to the next item now and huge thanks to those presenters and discussion there. I think that was a really useful update. So I'm going to invite Hannah Davies and Natasha Lambert, so Health Watch and Youth Watch, to talk to us about what they've heard from the public in the survey and the discussions that they've had with the public about vaccinations. It's important to hear the voice of people. So I'll hand over to Hannah and Natasha, who can facilitate the session and then I'll come back at the end and help with the board questions. Thank you.
Thanks, councillor Charles. Yeah, I'm going to just talk for 10 minutes and talk you through this presentation about what we heard in the vaccination survey. And then I'm going to hand over to Natasha, who's a member of our Youth Watch group and a member of the Health Watch Board as well, to facilitate some of the questions that we've been hearing throughout our work. Next slide, please, Arvind. So just a bit of background, hopefully, Health and Well Board members are up to speed. But we've been doing throughout COVID, we've introduced a new listening campaign called the Weekly Checking Programme. We've been asking people in Leeds questions around some of the key themes that were really important to hear their views around, so things like mental health, shielding, young people and care leavers, unpaid carers, and lots of other key subjects. As well as that online sort of survey, we've been working with our third sector partners, particularly Forum Central Third Sector Partners and Voluntary Action Leeds. And we've been having interviews with community organisations to mention we're hearing the widest range of voices, particularly those people with the greatest health inequalities. So the survey that we did, we did, it opened in 20th of November and it ran for four weeks and we had over 3,000 responses to that survey. So the presentation we've got here is just giving you the headlines from that work and actually some of the things that we've already talked about, you'll see more of it in the findings. So what did we ask? We asked people whether they plan to get the vaccine, why it's important for them to have the vaccine, where and when they'd like to get vaccinated, what might stop them having the vaccine and what more information they'd like about the vaccine. I should say, we also developed these questions in partnership with people, key people like Sam and colleagues, to make sure that the information we were getting could inform what we were doing here in Leeds. And we also asked for key monitoring information that you can see there. Who did we hear from? 68% of respondents were women, 90% were white British, 60% were clinically extremely vulnerable, 19% had a disability, 8% had a child under five, 13% were unpaid carers and 17% were health or care workers. In terms of the findings, it backs up what we've been talking around already, but the first key finding is that 80% of the people that we heard from planned to get vaccinated. And reasons that people talked about was people wanted to protect themselves and also they wanted to get back to normal. The second finding was that of those who aren't committed to getting vaccinated, the majority remain open to persuasion. And these are the people that we were talking about earlier and that Theo talked about, the vaccine hesitant people. So very few responses that we heard from people were anti-vaccination or talked about other conspiracy theories. 13% of respondents weren't sure whether to get vaccinated and 7% didn't plan to get vaccinated. What's clear and these are the messages that we've been feeding in and that we're hearing today is we must get the right information out to people to persuade the hesitant majority. The third key finding was around side effects and safety are the two most common concerns. So people talk to us about what's the risk of side effects? How do we know there won't be side effects in five or 10 years' time? How do scientists know the vaccine is safe? So this intelligence hopefully helps us understand what is that information that people really want to find out to help them make the decision around taking the vaccine. Just a few key findings here by demographic. People under the age of 44 were more likely than older generations to be hesitant. Hesitancy in the survey peaks amongst the 25 to 34-year-old age category. Ethnicity, people from white British backgrounds were more likely than people from other ethnicities to plan to get the vaccine. Hesitancy was particularly high among Black African Caribbean respondents and a key concern that people talked to us about were the side effects. Women were more particularly likely to be unsure and were twice as likely than men to want information about side effects. Disability and health conditions, hesitancy was notably high among people with a mental health condition. Parents, if women have a child under five, this makes them more likely to be hesitant. If men have a child under five, this makes them less likely to be hesitant. And health and care workers, workers were more likely than non-workers. Can't actually read what that slide says there. So I'll come back to that one. As I say, as well as the online survey and all the work that we've been doing at Health Watch, we wanted to make sure that we were speaking to those people who perhaps weren't online or really target those communities with the greatest health inequalities. We worked closely with our partners, Leeds Voices, Voluntary Action Leeds and Forum Central with the Communities of Interest Network to make sure we were hearing those people with the greatest health inequalities. Other groups such as People Matters, which is a learning disability organisation, the city also ran their own questionnaire focused on people with learning disabilities. So we gathered all that information together with these findings. In terms of the key theme from all the groups, oh, sorry, Arvind, can you go back, sorry? In terms of the key theme from all the groups, communicate, communicate, communicate. That's what we heard from people. Misinformation is circulating in the absence of reliable information from trusted sources. And community organisations were really keen to play their part in this in terms of getting the information to people that they support, but they needed good information to be able to give that out. The slides, the following slides just give you some insight from the different communities that we spoke to, working with Forum Central and Voluntary Action Leeds. So the Leeds Refugee Forum talked to us about misinformation is circulating about vaccines components, but also talks about an example of good practice of an African community radio station's interview with a doctor. And their offer there from trusted community members should be used to relay information. Refugees and asylum seekers organisation here talked about needing to build up people's trust in the vaccine, explain the science, address the question of side effects. The BME Hub talked about communication needs to be two-way. Members are often consulted by organisations, but they don't get answers to their questions. This has made people more wary of engaging and less trusting of the vaccine. Carers Leeds talked about, is it safe for people with existing medical conditions? Will it be safe for people to come out of shielding and re-engage with normal life? Could info be shared both with staff and the wider public? It's hard to relieve anxiety without knowing the facts. Leeds Society for Deaf and Blind people talked about feeling on the back foot when trying to inform members because of the wildly varying levels of understanding people have gleaned from the media. People need trusted info about the safety of the vaccine. Women's Lives Leeds talked about, women want to know when they'll get their vaccine, depending on their circumstances. And as we heard before, the Faith Forum talked about the potential to use faith buildings to give the vaccine. Leeds Gate, Gypsy and Traveller Organisation, Leeds talked about a lack of trust and information amongst Gypsy and Traveller communities. And People in Action, who did the questionnaire for learning disability organisations, fed back that people with learning disabilities access social media and believe what they read, whether it's true or not. Information is crucial. People need to hear that the vaccine doesn't contain COVID, that it's been tested properly. That is the start of a pathway back to normality. And people with, oh, sorry, go back, sorry, Arvind. And people with other disabilities are being advised not to use the bus, making it harder to get to appointments, which is something we touched on earlier. Hamara talked about, many of our families are fearful of the vaccine and worry about being able to trust it. I fear they will not make an informed decision based on facts, but I'm hearsay from others. Memory Lane Day Centre, which supports people with dementia, will the vaccine interfere with my own medicine? Has that been looked at? What will happen if I don't get it? What are the side effects? So hopefully that's a good overview of what people told us within that survey. As I said, it happened in November for a month, but we have offered to go out and do that on another basis, just because we know that people's feeling around the vaccine may change over time. At this point, I'm going to hand over to Natasha and Natasha's going to facilitate some of the questions that we've been hearing, both through our survey and through the Communities of Interest Network work.
So hi, everyone. I'm Natasha Lambert and as Hannah mentioned, I'm a board director at Health Watch Leeds and also a part of our Young Peoples Volunteer Group, Youth Watch. Thanks for inviting me to attend today. It's been really good hearing all the hard work that's happening in Leeds to roll out this vaccine. As you can see from the Health Watch Leeds survey, people have had a lot of questions about what's happening with the vaccination rollout. And so I wanted to ask the Health and Wellbeing Board members some of the common questions that have come up from people representing different communities in Leeds. So there are six questions that I'd like to ask. And the first is for Tim Riley from the NHS Leeds CCG and it comes from Errol from Leeds Dads.
Hi, I'm Errol Murray from Leeds Dads and we have a couple of questions for you. There are lots of anti-vaccine messages out there at the moment, saying the vaccine doesn't work, it's based on human embryos. It was developed way too quickly to be It was developed way too quickly to be safe and, and that the new South American vaccine, it doesn't work with it. Is there any truth here? And if these are false messages, why aren't we hearing your messages?
Okay, thank you. I think the first thing to say is, in terms of the speed of which this has developed, there's really unprecedented worldwide collaboration around this of different scientific parts of the scientific community. And also enormous amount of funding to put in and it's the global effort has allowed scientists to work much more quickly than they normally would. And complete years of work within months because of that level of collaboration and funding that's, that's gone into this. I think in terms of safety and effectiveness, the big, it's been shown to be effective. There were no safety concerns in studies of more than 20,000 people. And that's a really significant number of people that this has been tested in. I guess like all medicines, no vaccine is going to be completely effective. Some people may still get Covid, although probably it's a slightly less severe. But nevertheless, the effectiveness and the safety has been demonstrated in those 20,000 plus people that have received them. I think the vaccines approved for use in the UK have also met really strict standards of safety, quality and effectiveness set out by an independent body, the Medicines and Healthcare Products Regulatory Agency, the MHRA. This is not really an arm of government, it's deliberately set out arms length so it can act independently. And it would have done a lot of the rig, would have done all the rigorous checks that it would normally do for any medicine before it came onto the market. It has to go through all the clinical trials, all the other safety checks. And those are international standards that are applied before they'd have ever agreed that it could be used. And again, even as other vaccines develop, the NHS, before the NHS is going to be able to use them, then all gone through that same process. So it's not, not short cutting what is already there and established for all medicines that people take and all vaccines that people have previously taken. I suppose in terms of how the message is coming out, I think there's something about when you receive an anti-vaccine message, it's really important first to check the source of the information you've received. There are lots of rumours, there's lots of misinformation and fully understand why people may feel apprehensive. I think the other thing is that we really want to encourage people to go to a particular site, a particular place. There's set up a web, and the NHS has set up a webpage with all the information that people might need, as well as links to other trusted sources. And that's www.nhs.uk forward slash Covid vaccine. In Leeds, we're also developing a range of resources in different formats, using social media, engaging through different community groups. So you can make an informed choice about the vaccine. It's not compulsory, however, it does give us the greatest chance of beating the Covid 19. Help protect you, help protect loved ones as well as helping your NHS. Quite often people ask us, why do we not put more, more myth busting messages out? One of the really important things that we don't want to do is, if you like, exaggerate the, those messages. We don't want to make them appear more important and more significant than perhaps people perceive them to be. And it's really quite important, bit of advice from our communications experts, that we don't do that. Nevertheless, I think one of the, the things that we perhaps need to think about quite a lot is how we can encourage people to find the right place to go. Just have Thea's excellent example of what really struck me was we talk a lot about providing information. Please give us communication. Actually, I think Thea went and searched, was able to pull it towards her and to get her questions answered. And I think it's really important that we set up both clinical and community experts who have enough of the answers that when people ask the questions and pull the information towards them that they want, we, we make sure our system works in that kind of way. Stop there. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. The second question is also from Errol and is for Victoria Eaton from Public Health.
Current vaccines are being scheduled for vulnerabilities in the over 70s, but how long will the vaccines, how long will the vaccines last? We heard from the NHS last week that if you've had Covid, your natural antibodies will last five to six months. And we know that the flu vaccine has to be given out annually. So can we expect a Covid vaccine to be given out every five to six months?
Thanks, Natasha. So I'll, I'll just make two main points around the question. The, the first one around how long do we know that immunity lasts from the vaccine? So what we know from the studies we have so far is that if you've either had the, the virus itself and you've got natural immunity, or if you've had the vaccine and have immunity from the vaccine, we're pretty confident that you, you have a high level of immunity, probably about 80% for at least six months. Probably for eight months and possibly up to a year. So that's the very latest summary of all of the studies that have been done so far on the, on the length of immunity, either from, from natural immunity from the virus or from the vaccine. So that was the point about length of time. The, the second point also expands on what Tim's just answered around variance and around whether or not we'll need to be looking at new vaccines next year, the year after, et cetera. So what we know so far currently is that the, the vaccines that we have have worked really effectively around the, the, the variants of the virus that we've got in the UK at the moment. And most critically, they, they are showing to work against the new UK variants, the Kent mutation of the variant, which is now our dominant strain of the virus, both in the UK and in Leeds too. So that's wonderful news that, that, that we know that's the case. As we see the virus changing around the world, I think it's really important that people's expectations around what, what, what a vaccine now will give them is not protection forever against any, any variant of the virus. And it may be that we'll need to reformulate virus, the vaccine to, to respond to the latest strains of the virus as we do for other virus vaccines, including flu in later years. So we know it's effective for now, but that work will continue over, over this year, through this year and over the next year. So it's managing those expectations that it's not a, a, an immediate solution forever, but it, but it's very effective for now. Natasha, thank you.
Thank you, Victoria. So the third question is for Tony Cook from Health Partnerships and is from Abigail from Voluntary Action Leeds.
Hi, my name's Abigail Lally, project worker from Voluntary Action Leeds. My question to you today is, how are we sure that in five to 10 years' time, we're not going to be faced with side effects from the vaccine?
Yeah, thanks for the, the question. Really important question, obviously. And obviously already thousands of people, in fact millions of people internationally have been given the, the vaccine. And there are no long-term complications or serious side effects inevitably as yet. It's important obviously to understand that it's been through a whole series of, of clinical trials, not just in this country, with Germany, France, the States and, and other places as well. There can never be any guarantee that there aren't side effects. And most of those will be very, very, very minimal, usually at the injection sites, around some bruising or something else. And obviously it's been very closely monitored. But we're absolutely confident that with millions of people getting it, any side effects will be absolutely manageable. And the, you know, the risks are minimal and it's certainly worth absolutely everybody, as many people as possible, getting the vaccine.
Thank you, Tony. So the fourth question is for Sarah Monroy and comes from Ellie.
Hi, I'm Ellie and I'm representing young leaders from Street Games in Leeds. And my question about the vaccine is, if students are such a big cause of the spread, then why are we so far down the vaccination list?
Thanks, Natasha. So just a couple of points to raise in answer to Ellie's question. First of all, we are seeing transmission and spread of the virus across lots of different communities. There's no one part of our population in Leeds that responsible for the rates of Covid and that does vary on a week by week basis. And that's information that Victoria and our colleagues in public health track really closely to help us do that community targeted response. So the evidence is really clear at the moment. The only strategy we've got to prevent spread is the behaviour that we have and that's keeping that social distance. It's washing our hands regularly and wearing face masks off our health and care workforce, wearing PPE to give them that added layer of protection. There is no evidence at the moment, although it is subject to ongoing research, that the vaccine in itself will prevent spread. What we know the vaccine does is if you come into contact and contract Covid, it reduces the likelihood of people to go on and develop serious physical health problems as a consequence. And that's the decision that's been made on who should get the vaccine first. Those parts of our community, members of our community that are most at risk of developing those direct physical health complications and sadly death. So out of those four groups over the last 12 months, they account for 88% of all deaths from Covid, which is why they are our priority at the moment. And the decision on who gets the vaccine in each of the phases will be very much informed on saving lives and also to minimise that direct physical risk to people. And that's an important additional point for those that have had the vaccine. Doesn't mean to say that you should then not have to follow the same guidelines that we're asking everybody else to follow, which is to maintain that social distance. At the moment, we're all in a national lockdown, regularly washing of your hands and PPE. Because that's at the moment, the only way we know that we can prevent the spread of Covid. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. So the last two questions I'll be asking, which were some of the most asked questions in the Health Watch Leeds survey. Caffroff has kindly agreed to answer them. So my fifth question is, I've been called for my vaccine yet, even though I'm in a priority group. Sorry, I have not been called for my vaccine yet, even though I'm in a priority group. Why haven't I heard anything? Have I been missed?
So the, the very first priority group was people in care homes and people working care homes. And the vaccine goes to them rather than we, we ask them to come to the vaccine. So they've been dealt with. I'm guessing the, the next priority group that people are having in their heads is I'm a person who's over 80. And what we've found is that is obviously populations vary across different places in Leeds. And we have some GP practices that have a higher number of people who are 80 plus compared to others. So it may take those practices just a little bit longer to get to those individuals. But to just give that reassurance, you will be called if you are 80 plus. We won't have missed you. It's just a matter of being patient and you will get that invitation.
Thank you. So my last question for you that was asked a lot by the people in the survey is when are people who work with the public going to be vaccinated?
So at the moment, the Joint Committee on Vaccination and Immunisation, so you might have heard the acronym JCVI. The workforce they've identified in addition to the workforce that works in care homes is people who are frontline health and social care workers. So they'll be the people we're inviting to get vaccinated. You're likely to get that invitation within the next, over the, over the next three to four weeks. We want to go as fast as we can. And the government has issued very helpful advice about who comes into that description of a, a health or social care worker. And we, it's trying to be inclusive. So it will include people, for example, who work in the third sector. It will include staff who are employed by housing organisations but give support to clinically vulnerable people. So we're trying to be as inclusive as possible, but we're looking very carefully at what role does that person fulfil in their job? And then who is it that they are delivering services to? You put the two together alongside issues around, is that staff member clinically vulnerable? How old are they? And that helps us prioritise inviting people. Now beyond that, it isn't clear what other occupational groups might be called forward. And I've seen the Met Police Commissioner has put out in the public domain, she doesn't understand why police aren't being vaccinated. So I think our understanding is the first four JCVI categories, the aspiration is to get those people done in, across January and February. I guess we wait to see if there'll be any change in guidance from JCVI of, of who gets vaccinated next. At the moment, it's purely by age category as the biggest single indicator of risk. But there, there will be a discussion, a debate and a decision issued about whether different occupational groups might be brought forward into that prioritisation. But beyond that, I can't say. I just know that debate is happening about policemen and teachers, you could argue shop workers. You know, everybody can make a case why they, they feel they're a priority. But at the moment, we are, we go by the published list of priorities.
Thank you, Caff, and the rest of the Health and Wellbeing Board for taking the time to answer these questions. I'll now hand you back over to the Chair Councilor, Charles Wood, for discussion.
Thank you. Thank you, Natasha. Thank you so very much for your questions, collating those questions, bringing the, the voice of the public that you have gathered to the people who can answer those questions directly. And that's been really useful and thanks to Hannah as well. It's really important on the Health and Wellbeing Board, to me as Chair and all of us, that we bring the voice of people who use services, but our citizens generally, into the centre, into the centre of our decision-making on how we design together the services for the people. Because actually, if we do it in the way that people need it, it'll be more efficient and it will be better. So that's the underlying reasoning for our wanting to hear the voice of, of the people. But also, you know, people need to be heard. It's frustrating and marginalising when people's voices are excluded. So it's really, really important to me that, that, that we've had that discussion. Thank you so, so much. Can I ask as well that the board members consider sharing on their contacts this Health and Wellbeing Board YouTube video? Because this will be really interesting to people out there to see. This is two and a half, three hours of, of really in-depth discussion, answering the questions that people perhaps have out there. And seeing you being accountable in this way would be really interesting for people at the moment. So please do share this video, this YouTube sort of link that I'm sure we can get to you with your contacts and I'll do the same. So we also have possibly got some frequently asked questions here that we could put into an FAQ document and have that available as well. Because clearly people do have lots of concerns and they're very perhaps similar, but will be independent and individual as well. So I've got Tony Cook and Alistair Wallingbird saying on the chat, something, would you like to come in? Tony?
Yeah, just, just a quick point. The plan is to get through the first four JCVI categories by the 15th of February. Obviously that will depend somewhat on, on vaccine supply. And it's just worth, worth making that, that, that point clear. Then the next four, basically, which goes down to all over 50s, we'll begin to work through in the weeks after that. It's probably also worth mentioning as well, the council and, and other people have been making representation, right at the heart of central government about, you know, the potential priority for other groups of council workers, particular teachers and teaching assistants, but also refuse collectors. But until we get answers on those points, obviously we'll follow strictly the, the JCVI criteria.
Okay, just maybe I'm not on mute. Yep. And I think Victoria Eaton, Director of Public Health, had something to add to that. Victoria, do you want to come in?
Yeah, I was, I was just sharing a, a conversation earlier today on, on this, back with the board. The, the Joint Committee are being really clear that they are not going to recommend the, the occupational groups further down the line. It's a, it's a slightly technical issue, but they're clear that they'll give the evidence on which groups are most severely affected or are likely to lose their lives from Covid. And it then feeds into a, a policy decision. They're very mindful of the politics. And it then feeds into a, a policy decision. They're, they're very mindful of the politics and that's being applied to this nationally. So, so they're really clear that, that they won't make the decision, but they'll give the evidence on, on which groups are, are most severely affected. So I, I think just to share that, that, that's the nuance of the process.
Victoria, could I just ask a follow up on that? And if they, they're going to stick to their recommendations on the worst affected groups, not take any, make any other suggestions, that implies somebody else makes the decision in the end. Who is that? Is that local areas or is it national, national body?
All our understanding is that it's, that it's going to be national.
So politically nationally?
Yeah.
Thank you. That's helpful. Alistair Walling, did you want to say anything? Had you on the list?
I was just down there just to thank Hannah and Natasha. I think it's really important to have these questions kind of brought up. And I guess just to add to the kind of previous discussions with the sort of vaccine hesitant is that you, you GP, as much as we're busy in doing various things, we are very keen and see the real importance in getting as many people vaccinated as possible. We are experts in understanding people's concerns and explaining things to them. And that's what we, that's one of our big roles. You know, just to give an example, the evidence suggests that we vaccinated sixty people last week or the week before in the care home. And it's likely that we will have saved three lives, just as an average statistical. In reality, if Covid had, and if that care home had another wave of Covid, we potentially will save even more than that. So we're really, we're really keen on stressing the importance of these things. But we understand people's nervousness, we understand where people have got different evidence from, and we can point them in the right direction or discuss it with them.
Excellent. Thank you. Hannah, Hannah would like to come in.
Yeah, just, just to, just to stress the importance of what Tim and Theo talked about, about that issue about where do people go if they have questions? I think it is a really important thing that we need to, you know, need to think through. So, and I think that, that's come out of the meeting today in terms of that, that key question about where do people go?
Okay, yeah, I agree. So the frequently asked questions and this link to, to this session and somehow needs to get much more online. Associated information needs to get much greater online traction somehow, doesn't it? And that's great. Councillor Benner wants to make a comment.
I just commented on the chat. Thank you, Chair, that as well as making the case that teachers and teaching staff should be prioritised for vaccination, we've also made the case about early years staff. And councillor Blake and I wrote to ministers, Vicky Ford, the children's minister, as well as Nadine Sahar, we the vaccinations minister, but about this because, I mean, it's pretty nonsensical that they're open to all children when primary schools are considered vectors of transmission, but they are. So early years settings have been told to remain open to all children. But furthermore, they're also told not to wear PPE. That's actually in the DFE guidance because it's considered that it's potentially distressing and traumatising and not appropriate if you're caring for babies and small children. Now, providers don't actually disagree with that. They, in my, in my experience of the big Zoom calls we have with them, that they, they agree that, you know, with the kind of things they have to do, you know, changing nappies and wiping noses and giving cuddles, that could, it could be potentially distressing if they're wearing masks. But if they're expected to remain open and the guidance is not wearing PPE, they really, really do need to be prioritised for vaccinations. So we've made that case as well as for teaching staff.
Thank you. That's really helpful. And you sort of have in about children. It would be interesting to have the view, are children going to get, be vaccinated at any point? My, my assumption is no, but it'd be good if somebody could say that for certain. Obviously, children with underlying health conditions are hit a priority list, probably would, but somebody might be able to, to speak to that in a moment. Got Tim Riley, would you like to come in?
Yes, I think, I think we talk quite a lot about the JCVI, the Joint Committee, and, you know, advising on, on why and what, what order things ought to be in the list. I'm not really clear, I'm not sure that we're really clear in our communication why they have recommended that. And I think Alistair touched on it just now. The criteria is how many lives can we save the most quickly? And I, I think everything else, we, we often think in terms of children, you know, vectors of transmission and all those sorts of things. Until we've got herd immunity, or not herd immunity, but significant levels of immunity across the population, transmission isn't the issue. The driving force behind this is saving lives. And, and we, we may, we may feel that there's other reasons, but to me, that's quite a good reason. And therefore, when we, when we challenge it and ask for other groups for all sorts of reasons, I think we just need to come back to, this is about saving the most lives, the quickest, the quickest possi, in the quickest possible way. And that's the reason I've said that. And let, let's remember the, you know, England is currently the, the place with the highest mortality rate in the world. And I'm quite pleased I've picked that list, if I'm quite honest. I think it's the right call.
Okay, okay, I understand your, your argument entirely there. And certainly for now. But perhaps it could be revisited when we have significant numbers of people vaccinated. But it'd be interesting to see that it is a political decision at the same time, their advice is, is their advice. Shaq, would you like to come in?
Thanks, councillor Chalwood. I just wanted to respond to the questions and comments around the communications. I think there's three sort of key points. One is make sure we're consistent in our communication. So I think sometimes we're, we're, we're made aware of, you know, various questions coming in and a new myth that might come in from communities. And we just need to be really careful that we don't rush into providing a response because it might not be an accurate response. It's just a response. So sometimes the, the information that we're circulating might, might look as though it's taken a long time to get out there, but there's a very justifiable reason. Because having that consistent messaging means people can know when they go to the trusted sources, the information will be the same regardless of which source they choose. Secondly, linked to that, obviously, we mentioned the national website, which, the National NHS website, which has information at a national scale, but we're looking to develop a very comprehensive online resource on the CCG website, just because it, it creates a central point for the city. So that will include the FAQs we mentioned today. Obviously, we can update those as required. We've got a number of videos from healthcare professionals, some of which will be played in, in Lucy's slide set in a number of community languages. We've got local AMAMs who are supporting the effort and they've done videos and blogs. By having that in one sort of central resource that's regularly updated, I think we feel, I feel a lot more assured that we can reduce some of the, the myths and misinformation out there.
Yep. And I agree that there is something really important about consistency and professionalism in the, in the way that we all get our messages out, not least because we are a very diverse system with lots of different, different organisations within it doing lots of different work, which could get very confusing very quickly. And that would be a shame. Having said that, we've had, you know, good feedback and some good questions from the public that should help us to shape that as well going forward as we go through. We've just got a couple of more minutes on this item. So Sarah Munro has answered my question about the children helpfully, saying apparently the research on the vaccines currently approved for use, so not using to vaccinate children. So assuming that's a, that's a research efficacy safety issue. So that means it won't be used for children as far as I can see. Got nodding there. Pip, did you want to say your, your item? Your comment?
Thank you. I mean, it, it slightly follows on from Shaq's point. I'd kind of want to thank you today for answering the questions. And I think that commitment that we all have to sharing information. But I think it's also not just about having it on websites. It's about having so many different ways of communicating and kind of reaching different people. I think one of the things we've learnt is it's about who's conveying the message and how we make sure that local trusted people and, you know, that, that it's all about peers and support and lots of different ways. So I think it's, it's no good just to feel that we've got the messages right in one place on a website. It's such a big ongoing commitment, which I know, you know, I know so many of you here completely get and understand, but we kind of keep that effort up. Yeah, huge thanks. And especially to Natasha as well for supporting those questions and bringing the voices of some of those people linked into the community of interest into the room today.
Okay, so that brings us to the timing that we had for the end of this item. Has anybody else got anything they'd like to add? That's burning and hasn't been raised yet. I can't see anyone comment. I can't see everybody on my screen at once unfortunately, but I can't see anybody waving at me or commenting. So if that's all right, I'd like to thank Health Watch and Youth Watch again. And all the people who've asked questions with their videos and spent time considering how to, to answer the, the survey that you sent out as well. It's really, really useful and really important. And another call just to share between our networks from which we must get, be able to reach, you know, hundreds of thousands of people this sort of information. And when we get a standard set of information, we can send that out in our many different forms. Okay, we are running to time, which is very nice and very good. So we'll move on to the next item, which is going to cover more explicitly the issues around our health inequalities work with the vaccination framework. Public health in the council have a specific role in health inequalities around vaccinations of flu and everything else as well. So our public health consultant Lucy Jackson is going to lead this item with Sarah Bronston from the Academic Health Partnership. And I must say at this moment that our academic partners are really key parts of our, of our partnership in Leeds and team Leeds. You know, there's lots of really interesting research going on right now about how to reduce the spread of Covid in care homes and other areas as well. So just to, just to say thank you to all of those academics and the universities who are working hard on, on that with us and with, with health and care partners. So I'll hand over to, to Lucy and Sarah and for about fifty minutes and then we'll have a discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Chalwood. We can go straight to the first slide, I think, Arfan. So we've set up a partnership task group, yes, led by public health, but it is a partnership. And it is all around, I think, what a lot of people have been talking about for the whole of this session, which is how do we mitigate inequalities and ensure that underserved populations really do have high level of coverage of Covid vaccines? And I know that's at the core of the health and wellbeing strategy. It's what we all believe in very much. What I would like to say is there's a lot to do. So we haven't done it all. We're starting this, we're doing our best, but we're really committed to doing it. The group reports both to the overall vaccination group that Sam has talked about, that Sam leads, but also to the bronze over sixty group. And that's around the fact that, as we've said, the people that are being called first of all are in those age groups. This slide is just a reminder, it's a slide that was shown at the Health and Wellbeing Board back in July, when we talked about the impact of Covid and how it had shone a light on health inequalities. So this is how we're depicting what we're meaning by health inequalities, what we're meaning by who we're really interested in here. And it kind of links to a lot of what people have been saying here. So what Tim was saying about those who are clinically at high risk. But what we're doing here is putting that within the context of people who are also socially excluded, socially and economically disadvantaged, those with protected characteristics. And what we always say, it is these multi-layering of these different aspects that really means that we need to focus and perhaps do something different, more, et cetera, to really reach people. Okay, next slide. These are the principles that we've agreed across this partnership, the seven principles. Hopefully, they're not ones that anybody would disagree with here. The first one is very much about that, doing more and potentially different. And I think we've mentioned some of that, which I'll come back to. The second one, we've already listened to lots of those questions. It is very much around the kind of messages that Health Watch were giving us there about co-producing, what do we do? But also, we've already mentioned the Academic Health Partnership and looking at the insight that they've gathered on the evidence of what works. Plus other local data and the learning that we've had over the last ten months in Leeds. Really bringing that together to co-produce what do we do? The third is, speaks a bit more to, I suppose, the equality protector characteristics, but be about being culturally sensitive, about being age friendly. We're an age proud city. We want to make sure that those age friendly principles are throughout the vaccination programme. The fourth is about really, yeah, identify, ensuring that what we're doing works. So we've got to evaluate, we've got to be quick on our feet and, and really know that what we're doing is the right ones. I've mentioned the protective characteristics that then flow. And then number six is really looking at the needs of locally communities, but and that's both within neighbourhoods, the work that we're doing with PCNs, but also across communities of interest that we've already mentioned this afternoon and across the city. And then the seventh is our commitment to be action focused and responsive, to be really practical. Things that we've done already, such as find wheelchairs, ensure transport, but also some of those other things that you've already mentioned about needing time to have understanding and listen to people. Next slide. I think what we, oh, no, we're not. So in terms of our priorities, our first priority is very much around the insight and listening to people, listening to what evidence we've got so far nationally and locally. And I think, are we going? Arfan, I thought we were doing the comms now, but are we going now to? Right, yeah. So the, the first one is, this is, yeah, anyway. This, this is the communication that Shakur has already mentioned. And what we're going to show is a few examples from various frontline workers here. Talking in different languages, which is part of our communication strategy and hope, hopefully helps also with some of the vaccine hesitancy. So I think we're going to play two or three of these.
Hello, my name is Dr Sarwa and I'm a GP based in Leeds. I'm the clinical director for the Beeston Primary Care Network. You will soon be invited by the NHS to have your coronavirus vaccine, where you will be given more information about the vaccine and what it means for you. The vaccine is safe and it's been tested on more than twenty thousand people in clinical trials. And so far, hundreds of thousands of people have been vaccinated in the UK. I urge everyone to take a vaccination once you receive your invitation. This will protect you and hopefully your loved ones in your community. The coronavirus vaccine is our hope to fight this virus and get back to a normal life. Thank you.
My name is Dr Amol Phal. I'm a GP. If your age is over eighty or seventy, you can get Covid nineteen or coronavirus vaccination. You can get it. Coronavirus vaccination is essential for you. This is a special vaccine that is used for work and for medical purposes. I took this vaccine and I'm grateful. If you take this vaccine for your health, pray for the best and do not hesitate to take it. This vaccine is essential for work and for Covid nineteen or coronavirus infection. It is essential for you. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Esther Serenberg and I'm a workhorse of HHS in Leeds. You will receive an invitation to attend the coronavirus vaccination conference. What is the effect of the vaccination for the transmission of the virus? The vaccination was conducted by research and investigation. Therefore, I hope everyone will not hesitate to attend the vaccination conference. It protects you and prevents the transmission of the virus. Thank you for being with us.
My name is Dr Sarwa. I'm a GP in Leeds. There is a coronavirus vaccine in the UK. In a short time, you will receive a coronavirus vaccine. You will receive a vaccine. The vaccine is available and twenty thousand people have tested it. It is not dangerous. It is essential for your health. You must take it. This is a good opportunity to wipe off this coronavirus. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Esther Serenberg and I'm a workhorse of HHS in Leeds. In a short time, you will receive an invitation to receive Covid nineteen. You will receive more information about the vaccine and what it means for you. The vaccine has passed all the tests and is safe. The vaccine is safe. Please vaccinate when you receive it. It is the best chance for you to be vaccinated. And vaccination is the way to Covid nineteen. And vaccination is the way to keep COVID-19 under control.
Thank you. So hopefully that gives a bit of a flavour of some of the communication that Shak mentioned earlier, that we have already produced in different languages that can start to be shared. Next slide, please. So now, just one of our first priorities, as I was mentioning before I jumped back, sorry, was around ensuring that we have that insight, that we know what evidence is telling us, what Health Watch surveys have been telling us, but also what national and wider evidence is telling us around vaccination. So Sarah from the lap is just going to give a couple of slides on what she's found so far.
Hi, thank you Lucy, excuse me, and hello everybody. Yeah, so I've been gathering or working with colleagues across the patch, so in Leeds, but also Bradford, Calderdale, Huddersfield and Wakefield, gathering the local intelligence and evidence-based best practice for how people are engaging with their communities about vaccination generally, or this vaccination particularly. And I just want to, just before I talk to the, some of the points on this slide, I just want to raise a couple of points verbally, I suppose. So it's, people have mentioned it on this call already, but if you are in one of these sort of underserved groups, traditionally underserved groups by health or care services or broader services, actually your health outcomes are in general likely to be a bit poorer. And also, you're probably more likely to be significantly impacted or more significantly impacted by COVID. Also, actually, for many groups of underserved communities, they're actually less likely to report being interested or keen to take up offers of the vaccine. So I can give some sort of examples from surveys, including the Health Watch one, Hannah, that you and your colleagues spoke to, but also very similar kind of findings from surveys in Bradford and in Sheffield, where depending on who you ask that question of, there's a lot of variability. So for affluent, sort of areas of high, low areas of deprivation in Leeds and Bradford, you go to those communities and they're maybe 93% white and you'll be getting answers from surveys where by far the majority, 93, 94, 95, 96, 97% of people will be saying they'd like to take up the vaccine. If you go to more deprived areas, perhaps where the ethnic diversity is, there's a greater mix, you might come away with answers where 46% of those communities and areas are reporting that they're intending to take up the vaccine. And if you go to very marginalised groups, people talked about homeless or refugees earlier, then they may report even lower levels of intending to take up the vaccine. And there's lots and lots of reasons that are behind this. A lot of it, you can kind of root back to trust. So kind of historically, people from these communities may have lower levels of trust in authorities and institutions. And that can influence people's, even things like people's willingness to go to large clinical institutional-looking settings to go and have their vaccination. So that can generate people sort of wanting to avoid or having anxiety about going to those very institutional-looking locations. Again, a lot of people talked about, I think it's been referred to, about the side effects of the virus, particularly in the long term and testing, for example, in the trial so far on black and ethnic minority participants in the trials, how much information is available about that. And related to that, sort of the speed at which the vaccine has been developed. Some underserved groups have very practical concerns, I think, been alluded to in the discussion so far around transport, getting to locations, risk and shielding, need for carers to accompany them or having some other kinds of support. So these are all really important things to take into account. And again, if we think about evidenced best practice of all those sort of local insight work that's going on, then there's loads of good work and evidence to support the idea that actually for underserved communities, you do need to sort of have a, think a little bit differently and have the sort of the widest possible offer with as many agencies as possible equipped to kind of participate in support and provide opportunities over time to work through statutory and voluntary sector organisations to reach out to those groups and to have dialogue, so not necessarily to come with such, I don't know what the word is, but sort of such one directional sort of messaging, offering opportunities for conversation and dialogue and for people to raise their concerns and come to their own decisions over time. That's a very helpful, very effective way to engage with people who are in underserved communities and groups. Offering mobile, so I think Sam, right in your first slide, you talked about roving roving vaccination sort of hubs, and I think that is going to be really important for these underserved underserved groups, offering vaccinations in community settings. I can see somebody's, oh, Tim, you've popped in the chat about informed dialogue being really important. It is, and I think it's very, very important that those voluntary sector or anybody engaging with communities in these conversations is really well-equipped to have those conversations and engage with that dialogue in an informed way. So it's absolutely key. And I think Shak, you and other colleagues, it's part of resources you're developing, I believe, to help volunteers engage in those situations. Peer-led work, it's really, really useful, having peer-led, co-designed engagement for those communities. It's one of the most effective ways you can go about this. What else should I pick out? I think that will do, and I'll just speak briefly to this then main slide. So summarising a whole load of work that's going on out there. It is for underserved communities particularly, the approach is really recommended, take the message and the dialogue and the vaccination itself to underserved communities, wherever that's possible. Use outreach mechanisms, the assets based in localities, go through faith leaders, trusted people in those communities. Undertake that activity where that's possible, in trusted places, in communities, community settings, and wherever possible, use co-designed messaging so that you know it's gonna work well and be received well with those groups. And more broadly, so some of the points under here are really for sort of conversation as the health inequalities plan develops. But actually, some of the work that Lucy and her colleagues will be facilitating will be discussions with the primary care networks about how resource they are and what networks they can use in their localities to operate in this kind of way for underserved groups. And if I could just have the next slide quickly. And this was a really helpful kind of way of thinking about that engagement that's been developed by the Centre for Sustainable Healthcare Quality and Equity and building trust and community engagement. Actually, in Leeds, a lot of that, huge amounts of that are in place through our current assets and networks and channels and the third sector work. And there is a question around what additional support the third sector may need to be able to deliver any additional support that's required in relation to this vaccination programme. There's loads of evidence-based approaches coming from Leeds and areas in West Yorkshire about best practice with some of these underserved communities. The two I've starred, I think, are really interesting live conversations that are going on. One is about thinking about different kind of workflow approaches, including those mobile or outdoor outreach approaches to delivering vaccinations in those conversations. And thinking about how to expand the pool of providers in the broadest possible sense of people who are engaging with those communities and having the dialogue about the vaccination programme and also providing those vaccines. I'll pause there and hand back to Lucy. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. So moving back to the next slide, so Sarah's given an idea of the kind of intelligence that we're using that will drive the rest of the framework. I'm not going to give so much on all of the rest, but I'll just give a flavour. So the first three then are really up here are what you might call our foundations. So there's the insight, but there's also the quantitative data that we're getting in terms of we know how many people are in all the different groups. And then hopefully, as we start to progress, we'll know who is taking up the vaccine. But also, I think, as Alison mentioned earlier, it's really important, it's the law, that we have an equality impact assessment across the whole of the vaccination programme, that we know that all of our sites are accessible, inclusive, et cetera. Also, Sam mentioned earlier, you know, do we know where the gaps are in geographical areas? What communities may we need to have, as we've mentioned, a roving team? At the moment, we haven't made that decision. We're starting to look at that. We want to be as flexible and agile as we can do. We have already been asked by NHS England though, to provide a list of key communities that we think might need to have that kind of service. So some kind of way of a pop-up or something going out to different communities. So for example, we've looked at the homeless that I think was mentioned earlier and Bevan Healthcare, how could they do that? And all the different kind of communities like that, that are both in protected characteristics, but also are the key communities in terms of socially excluded and socially disadvantaged that we've mentioned. The next three are very much more about the neighbourhood level. So it says seven here, but it's actually eight, I should have changed it, sorry. Primary care networks are in the most deprived areas. What we've done is we've developed almost a blueprint, which is a framework that we are working with them to look at what are the barriers that they need to consider? Whether that's about booking, whether that's about language issues, I suppose, a bit what Fear was saying about having a conversation, it's a bit shared decision-making really, isn't it? What do I understand, what's important to me, being able to discuss it? But also the practical issues such as access issues of transport. We've given all of the PCNs some funding to supply taxis, if that is a real key issue. We've given neighbourhood networks funding to provide transport, if that's the issue. We've looked at things such as wheelchairs, again, if that's the issue. All of the age-friendly principles that I've mentioned earlier, but every PCN is different and everyone is wanting a different type of support. But then also putting that within wider, a bit like Sarah was mentioning, building on engagement with local communities and engaging and mobilising the third sector. I've mentioned the neighbourhood networks, but also we've done the same kind of funding stream with Best Together, which is some of our broader third sector partners. And we're just about to give some more funding around culturally diverse communities, again, just to support all of this very much at a neighbourhood level. Then if we just move to the next one, please, Arfan, which I think I'm almost there. The next ones are a bit broader, so they're about communities of interest and proportionately ensuring that we increase the uptake by those people we really want to get the uptake. So I think, again, this feeds into some of the things and maybe the question that Tim answered earlier, which is we're wanting to have community champions to increase local awareness. Some of these we already have, we have age-friendly champions. We've talked to some faith leaders, but we want local third sector people in areas, in neighbourhoods, to have those answers when they're ever being asked, so that we can have more conversations. We've got volunteers as well that we've had throughout the whole of the COVID response. So looking at that whole community champion model, and again, we've got some extra funding via local government to support some of that. We're also, and it's being trialled, I think, this afternoon with some third sector, we've also developed some training, well, training awareness package, which hopefully will answer a lot of the questions that you've been asking today. And our aim is, it will be a webex, there is also one that people can book on to, a want-to-know-more session, but we're going to take it everywhere and anywhere that people are interested. And that's really about increasing knowledge and understanding across anybody working across this area. And it will cover some of the issues we've mentioned today, such as the vaccine hesitancy issue. And then lastly, we've already mentioned the communications, we've showed you some of the communications, but I completely agree with what's already been mentioned. There's communications overall, but then there's communications at all of the different levels. One of the things we're looking at is how we can work with some of those GPs, the pharmacies that you saw earlier, and match that up with a local leader in that area where they are, where they do work, to really spread those kind of messages. So really taking those communications at different layers. Thank you, Chair. I'm done.
Thank you. I was just muting myself, so thank you very much. Thank you. That's really, really, really good to see all that work on there. Thank you, Sarah, as well. So I think we've covered a number of themes around health inequalities and other discussions as well. And part of the, one of the last discussions was about, somebody brought up about the homeless people in the city or people who, I think it was Dr Beal, who are so versed in or difficult to access and actual street homeless as well. And people perhaps living in hotels temporarily. So Tony, I think you wanted to come in on that earlier on, so could I ask you to just?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. I mean, Lucy's covered much of it, to be honest, but what we know, I mean, the homeless is a really good example, actually. We know that many homeless, for example, will be in the clinically extremely vulnerable group. We know that others will have long-term conditions, but we actually know from things like the shielding programme and the previous flu programmes, that people in these groups have low uptake of all services. So ultimately, what this is about is being far more proactive than we otherwise might be, working with the key individuals who are working with these groups. So there's already been conversations, for example, with Bevan Healthcare, with people in the housing department, and trying to get some really targeted approaches. And I think it is important as well, just to note that for some groups, it may well be easier, for example, if Bevan or someone are working with large numbers of people on the street culture, to jab people more or less en masse, rather than expect them to go to other services. So this is what we're working through in the Health Inequalities Group. And, you know, likewise, it's fair to say the other groups like gypsies and travellers that came up in the previous piece, we know we've got to do some serious thinking if we're going to get any decent uptake at all in some of those groups who traditionally haven't used our services.
Thank you. Yes, I agree with that, all of that. I mean, I'd be, I'd be in favour of if we had unlimited supply of vaccine and we had unlimited registered professionals to do it, of going through the city door by door while we were under lockdown, as well as going to targeted groups, you know, just to get there quickly. But I suppose we haven't got that situation, which is a shame, but certainly for groups that we're talking about. We can do that and it's probably the only way to do it. So that's really good to hear. On, I've got a few people who want to come in. If anyone else wants to come in, please do indicate. On the languages point, have we added British Sign Language in there as well? As a language?
Thanks. Yeah, yes, I mean, Shak, sorry Shak might want to come in, but I understand we have done and we've also got a video.
Great, that's great to hear, thank you. So I had comments from Tim Riley and Dan John Beal, and Tim, did you want to come in? Are you on mute, Tim? Tim?
Sorry, I'm muted. No, I'm fine. I think Sarah picked it up as we went through, just the importance of this, it's a dialogue, it isn't a one-way communication.
Great, thanks. Dr Beal?
Thanks, Chair. I put in the chat, but I just wanted to say publicly, thanks to Sarah and Lucy for those videos. It doesn't just apply to people who, where English is their second language. It applies equally to people who are, you know, English speakers. Not everyone is good at reading leaflets and actually to have that information available in a verbal way, I think is very important for those people who find that easier than reading any leaflets which might produce. So it's really good to see those being produced. I wonder, Chair, with your permission, if I could just expand a discussion on any... discussion on inequalities more generally. In the papers which accompanied this meeting, it makes mention of the Build Back Fairer document paper produced by Public Health England with Professor Michael Marmot. And Michael Marmot, last year, also produced his follow-up to the work he did 10 years ago, looking at inequalities in health more widely. And that was published, I think, last February. And following that, the Royal College of Physicians established the Inequalities in Health Alliance. That's described as a coalition of organisations with an interest in improving health and reducing health inequalities. And this fits absolutely with what we discussed at every one of our agenda meetings. We are all about improving health and reducing the health inequalities across this city of Leeds. There are over 150 organisations which are now participating in the alliance. There are two or three smaller local authorities. There's one large local authority, which is Liverpool City Council. And I just wonder if we can perhaps urge the City Council of Leeds to consider Leeds City Council affiliating to the Alliance, the Inequalities in Health Alliance. I'd like to see, you know, us signing up and publicly saying nationally, this is where we stand. We want to improve health. We want to reduce inequalities for all of those communities in our city.
Thank you, John. Thank you for that. And I'm very aware of Michael Marmot's work. And it does fit exactly, obviously, as you say, with what we're trying to do as well. Would anyone like to comment on John's suggestion? Victoria?
Thank you, councillor Chilwood, and thanks, John, very much for those comments. In response, I'd like to say just two things, that when Michael Marmot produced his 10 years on, you know, how are we doing around inequalities and what can we learn and how do we need to do things differently? One of the many challenges this year was that that report, which was much anticipated, got completely overshadowed by the start of the pandemic, which is always something that we wanted to rectify once we were in a position to do so. So you're right, now that Professor Marmot's written the specific report to follow it up around inequalities through Covid-19 and the impact of Covid-19. I think it gives us, I mean, if anyone's had a chance to look at the report, it gives us such high-quality, very specific and useful roadmap to move forward. And I'd be very keen to use that at the centre of our, you know, thinking about how we move forward. So I'd just like to respond on the Marmot's one very positively. I think I'm certainly very happy to take away and have conversations with others about formal sign-up to the network. It feels like a real opportunity to reflect the work we do as a city, so happy to take that away.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to comment on that? Point? I think, John, that's a, I can't see any hands in the chat, but forgive me if I'm missing anyone, please do just come in and tell me. You know, that sounds like a really good thing to explore. I think we have a tackling health inequalities group. So perhaps they could be tasked with going and exploring this. Sometimes these things do have costs associated as well, so I don't know if that needs looking at as well.
There is no cost, Chair.
Ah, fantastic. Well, that's great, especially at the moment with everything. Good. So, yeah, that sounds really, really positive. Okay, Lucy's saying you can take it on as an item if everyone's in agreement to look into that and feedback. And I have a question. If others don't have anything at the moment, please do pop it in the chat if you would like to come in. Can I ask about people with severe and enduring mental health problems? Especially those who have assertive outreach or who are in the mental health unit, or those with, you know, more organic mental health conditions, you know, very sort of complex dementia. Are we going to those people to vaccinate them, offer a vaccination and supporting them to participate early, given that their health concerns, those groups are very, the physical health concerns of those groups are often overlooked? Who would like to take that?
Chair, I'm happy to take that. Sarah from Lees and Your Partnership. So one of the things that we've been doing with the establishment of the Hub at Mount is working through our priority vulnerable patients in our inpatient wards and to absolutely the being picked up. We are doing work to start to think about how we roll out in the community. So as you rightly say, service users that are under our assertive outreach teams. We know some of the communities we serve do not turn up generally for routine physical health checks, health concerns to their local primary care practices. So we're looking at the moment already how we can make sure that we target and take the vaccine out to those communities. Absolutely.
Thank you. That's really reassuring. A mental health champion for the city or one of them. It's always good to hear that that's been considered already. I have, I can't see anyone else who'd like to come in, if that's the case. Could I just ask Alastair Low to come in?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I just wanted to contribute to the debate about health inequalities because I think the vaccination programme will reinforce the health inequalities that have been exposed by Covid in a really, really terrible way. And I think it behoves us to act and to act with passion and with leadership and with speed. I think it's great that the plan we've just heard about has got data, intelligence-led. But I think it's really important that that data is shared and communicated across the whole of the city, third sector, the whole of the system, for us to understand who is getting vaccinated in what areas and who isn't. Because that will help us to target our resources, our knowledge and our skills in the right areas to try and overturn some of these entrenched inequalities that we know are now being manifested through the vaccination programme. So I don't know who's doing this data, where it is, but we need it. We need it publishing. We need to have a data group that's looking at that and then making some really fast-paced decisions about. We know, for example, it's X, Y and Z, and we need to get some resources in there. There's been lots of research that's been talked about. I think the Health Watch research. I love your hammer, but I don't think that the numbers quoted for Black and Asian people are very, very low and not statistically relevant. So you can't really draw any conclusions from that research that you've done just before Christmas. And I think you need to go out and find Black and South East Asian people to ask about their intentions, so we can get a really good understanding of what people intend to do, because the data that's been shown to us is not really helpful in understanding people's real intentions. Yes, there's other data. So I think that just before Christmas, the Royal Society of Public Health published some data that was published in The Guardian, and only 57% of people said they intended to get the vaccine. But really importantly, 35% of the 43% said they would consider getting a vaccine if recommended to do so by their GP. So PCN's great. Let's get GPs massively engaged and involved in using the data that they've got, that very neighbourhood-level data about who they've got as patients, to be part of this solution. If you don't engage them, you're not going to get to those people who need us most. They want to be convinced. That's why 35% said, please let the doctor convince me, because then that person can answer all their questions. I also think that we need to have some really local understanding of what is happening in our neighbourhoods, because it's different in different places. So Touchstone's been doing some work on Harehill's Town Centre for about the last three months. And the picture that's emerging is really quite startling. So, yes, trust is an issue. Trust with the NHS and structures and systems, which is all about racism and all the rest of it. Yes, all the myths that are abounding on social media, WhatsApp, etc., are part of the problem. You know, that the vaccine has pork or beef in it, those kinds of myths. But thirdly, there is a lack of engagement, a refusal to engage from some newer and more and younger communities. So, for example, on Harehill's Town Centre, younger communities, like Eastern European communities, or young, they don't have their old grandma living down the road. They're not taking any notice of the face space, whatever it is. They're not socially distancing. They're not keeping themselves or the people safe, because they're not engaged with it. They're young. They don't believe that it's going to affect them, even if they believed it exists. And we need to have a strategy that addresses the fact that people from minority ethnic communities are in with other people from minority ethnic communities, and they are potentially causing greater exposure to the virus. And we need a strategy for that, because it might be a bit racist to say that, but it's happening. So understanding what's happening at a really local level in different neighbourhoods will be the key to addressing these very local issues. So I'm really supportive of what's happening. Call on us. Nobody's asked me to do anything yet. We're desperate to help. We're doing loads of stuff in Touchstone to get our own staff to take up the virus. We want to engage our staff in being part of the solution for you. Ask us. Ask all the voluntary sector. We're here to help you. You've got to ask us. Thank you.
Thank you, Alison, and I really appreciate your views and your considerations of that. And since you've said what you've said, we've now got another five people who wish to speak. So I'm sure we can pick up some of the points you've raised in that. However, we do only have another 10 minutes just to let those five speakers know that we're not going to be able to have a very long debate. But Alastair, Alastair Whalling, you were first.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring in one of the points earlier, although it touches on a few of these, just to give you as one of the value of the primary care networks working and the individual practices is a little bit of Alison's, is understanding individuals and treating everybody as individual. So in my practice, we've got four people over 80 who we have not yet been able to contact. I know those four people. They are on my list until we get them. It may even be door-knocking. But we can work at that granular level. We talked about the mental health aspects and those harder-to-reach groups. Having done one of our care homes, which is our earlier priority, had both people with dementia, but also younger people with brain injury who were all covered. And we worked either, if they were able to consent, they would be consented. We worked with families. We worked with people enduring or lasting power of attorney, all those kind of things to help make sure we get the best decisions for those individuals, treating them all as individuals. So we're working absolutely at that granular level. It will be different and more difficult in some of the primary care networks with the different demographic makeup, where those numbers are likely to be higher and the resources more stretched. So it's important that as a city, we look to back up those areas, perhaps less so than ones where it's less of an issue.
Great. Thank you very much. That's really helpful. I've got councillor Harrington.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, it was just a point that Alison made, really, just to say.
Sorry, councillor, we can't hear you that well. Perhaps you.
Oh, sorry. It was my microphone. Sorry. Sorry. Yeah, it was just one of the points Alison made, just talking about a local level. One of the ward members in the outer north-east actually arranged for a GP from the GPs Confederation, I'm not sure the name of the doctor, to actually, they had a Zoom meeting for residents. And he was on the Zoom meeting for about an hour and a half. And the councillor said that the GP was absolutely fantastic and he answered every single question that members of the local community had for him about vaccination, the Covid rollout, or all, anything to do with it at all, was absolutely amazing. So that kind of work is going on, but it is on the initiative of the local leaders that are doing that. So maybe we could have something to suggest that that's something that other ward members could do in conjunction with their LCPs and PCNs. Just a thought.
Thank you. That's really good. It's good to hear that there is local autonomy about some things, which is great. I think when I bring officers back in to respond to some of these points, maybe Lucy or Tony, perhaps Tony can pick that up. And I have got Lucy next, but I also have Hannah. So I don't know, you want Hannah to speak before you, Lucy, or do you want to come in now? Hannah, you come in first. Thank you.
All right, just to follow up on what Alison, I completely agree. And I think those are some of the messages we've been putting in Alison around having real-time data on who actually has had the vaccination, so we can monitor it. The need for a targeted approach for different communities, the bit that Sarah pulled out. We absolutely have to do this with communities in a co-design way. And the key role of GPs as trusted partners in terms of delivering some of those messages as well. So and just on the survey, absolutely, it's not representative. But I think that's why we take the approach of working with the sector partners to hear those specific views as well. So absolutely agree with what you're saying.
Thanks, Hannah. That's really helpful. And Tony, do you want to come in?
Yeah, just a couple of quick points. Completely agree with councillor Harrington's point. And one of the things that we'll be rolling out over the next couple of weeks is a number of conversations with community committees involving people who are involved in the programme and local GPs in each one. We've had a couple of trial runs and a couple of conversations with pe-elected members. And obviously, there've been the full member briefings that we've done as well. These are going to be really important as we move forward. Just a quick point on the data issue. It really is absolutely central that we get better data as the programme develops. And it's fair to say that councillor Blake and Tom Redden have both made that point nationally on a number of occasions. Because unless we get that data locally, it's really difficult to implement some of the health inequalities plans that we've got, particularly around access for certain communities. So in the programme, we have been thinking about this, and we pulled together a large group of people, including university colleagues last Friday night, to look through what we need to have locally and what data we'd need and how we can get that by pooling some of the existing sources, rather than relying on those sources that we've got nationally. And it's fair to say, we've got some disparate sources. We've got the GP sources, we've got LTHT, and we've got council systems for social care, and we need to bring those together. But like you say, we've got to get as near to real time as possible. So if we know there are issues with uptake, then we can obviously, you know, move services at speed to do the work with trusted leaders in those communities. So it's maybe a message that the board can send to NHS England around the importance of getting the data and intelligence absolutely right on this programme.
Thanks, Tony. Now, given we have a representative of NHS England here, perhaps you could take that point on with Boris directly, rather than us writing to you or another.
Yes, certainly will.
Yeah, thank you.
Feedback on that.
Thank you very much. Does Sarah or Lucy want to come back on any of the points that have been raised on the item before we close? Lucy, could you?
I think.
Yeah, say that to the group.
Yep. I was going to say, I've put a lot in the chat, hopefully trying to answer some of the different questions, such as pockets of deprivation, whether in other areas. So some things we've done across the whole of the patch. For example, the funding of the neighbourhood networks is in all of the areas in terms of supporting people, the community champions work, the wider increasing the knowledge and everything is in all of the areas. But hopefully, I mean, we've given a snapshot. We're very open to keep talking to everybody in terms of how this unfolds. It is changing all the time. And hopefully, we'll be developing it in the way that all of you have mentioned today. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah, did you want to come back on any points? Happy to. You're on mute, but yeah. I can see you saying no, but we didn't hear that, Sarah, so. Did you want to say? Oh, okay. Okay. Thank you very, very much for that. I think that's, it just shows the absolutely huge breadth of work that's happening. But, you know, but generically, getting that vaccine rollout to work and then how to drill down into communities to get to the people who really need our help and support to get the vaccine. It is an incredible amount of work that you're all doing. And I'm really pleased that we have a local care partnership sort of framework set up, where I'm hearing back from elected members, their input into it. And I'm hoping you're finding, as GPs and, you know, healthcare professionals and your teams are finding, that really useful as well, because together, we can reach everybody, hopefully, and try and and try and sort of do it in the round together. That's the only way we're going to deliver at pace this very difficult, very difficult programme. But huge amount of work going on. Thank you so, so very much for everything. It's now four o'clock, so it really is the end of the meeting, unless there is something very very burning to say. Maybe Sam would like Sam Prince, if you're still with us. I can't see you on my screen, but if you're still with us, do you want to say anything, as a lead, just to close the meeting?
Just if you can encourage people to take the vaccine when they are.
Just if you can encourage people to take the vaccine when they are called for it and to be patient. We will call them in time. I think they're the two biggest messages for us.
Thank you. That's great. And I think we've got quite a lot of actions as well from the meeting to go into various groups who are designing how, how things move going forward. So huge thank you to you all again. Stay safe, stay well. I hope we get to see each other in person at some point this year, when we've all had the, everyone who's eligible gets a vaccination and we can get back to life a little bit more normally. Thank you again and have a good evening.